First item tonight is awards and presentations. Special presentation of the 2020 Valdosta Historic Preservation Awards. Dr. Alex Alvarez, the chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission is going to join me up front. Jake Orton, the Historic Preservation Planner. And then I'm going to act as panel board just to hand out the awards. So please.
Good evening. I'm Jake Orton, the Historic Preservation Planner and Special Projects Coordinator for the City of Valdosta. I'll try this. No way for me to see everybody, but hopefully you can hear me. May of each year is Historic Preservation Month for the United States. This year, we are celebrating the month of May, moving late due to the virus. But we're still celebrating this Historic Preservation Month here in Valdosta. These awards are a part of our celebration of Historic Preservation Month this year. And the awards are for positive reinforcement of the historic preservation here in Valdosta. It's good will for the community and it's very exciting to be here to get out these awards tonight. Mayor Scott Matheson and Dr. Alex Alvarez will be presenting the awards. I'm the announcer. The first award that we're going to be giving out tonight is for outstanding achievement. It is in recognition mission for large historic rehabilitation projects that have been restored and maintained their historic integrity of design while being rehabilitated. The first project that we are awarding tonight for outstanding, well, the only outstanding achievement award winner tonight is the Bird Hospital Rehabilitation. It's owned by the Allen County Historical Society. It was built in 1927 by Dr. Frank Mixon and Dr. Frank Bird. It's on the corner of Oak and Central Avenue. The building is a two-story brick building that's fully a reliable design. It was originally red brick. And then it served while it was built from 27 to 1943. Then after 1943, it was the health department and later a youth building for the First Baptist Church. The bricks were painted white at some time in its history and in 2015, it was sold to the Historical Society, which then began work on it in 2017. We have two winners coming tonight. The first one would please come to the Historical Society. I believe Paxidile is the president of the Historical Society will receive the Outstanding Achievement Award for the building rehabilitation for the Historical Society. No handshake, please. No hugs. That's your slogan. Goodbye. Okay, y'all want to send a picture? I want to introduce you. Okay. Okay, so this building, one thing. This building has been a beautiful rehabilitation. And the architect that oversaw this property is also getting awards tonight for the design of the building and the rehabilitation of the building. As you can see, the building has been turned into a beautiful red brick. All the original features have been restored. Glenn Gregory, if you'll please come up. Jay Glenn Gregory, an associate, was the architect of the project. One really unique feature of this project, one really unique feature of this project can be seen on the screen right now is the red brick. The paint was not restored or not removed from the red brick, but the brick, this was an ingenious idea right here. The bricks were painted a red color and then the painters came back and painted the white lines around the bricks to make it look like the original mortar. So it looks like a brick building restored from the street. It was a great idea and great job, Glenn, on this project. Thank you. The next category for awards tonight is for distinguished merit. Distinguished merit recognizes smaller projects that contribute to Valdosta's heritage and improved buildings within the historic district. A few years ago, Dr. Alex Alvarez purchased a house on Williams Street. He rehabilitated it and moved into it for his own home. He became interested in the historic district and interested in homes in the historic district. And so he began a project that he has termed the Brooklyn North Historic District Fraxman and American House, American Small House Project. The mission of this project is to purchase homes in the historic district that have become rental properties and that have had less than exemplary maintenance. And he will rehabilitate those homes and then resettle those homes to homeowners. So he is restoring home occupied ownership within the local historic district. This year, he has been awarded for three homes that he worked on and brought back homeownership in the district. The first is 209 East Cranford, which is up on the screen. It received interior and exterior repair, every painting, and some landscape upgrades. The next home is part of this year's project, 212 East Cranford. It's also a Fraxman style home that received interior and exterior upgrades. It's painted on the outside and also had landscape upgrades to it as well. The third home was the most complex of the three. It required most work. It received interior and exterior rehabilitation. It received the addition of a new master bedroom and bathroom on the back of the home. And to make it more sellable, the Fraxman roof was restored, the front porch was restored, the landscape was rejuvenated, and the driveway was repoured. So a lot went into this particular project. So congratulations. This is Dr. Alex Alvarez, the chairman of our district. Thank you. Get your banner. Can you get a photo up here? I'll let you take a photo there. All right. Thanks for your wonderful work in the historic district, Dr. Alvarez. The third category for the awards this year is for stewardship. Stewardship is a concept of owning and maintaining buildings in historic districts for a long period of time, being a good steward, keeping those buildings in good shape, beautiful all the time for everyone in Valdosta to appreciate it. The first award is going to the congregation of the First Antioch Missionary Baptist Church. If you'd like to come forward, pastor over there. Okay, the y'all can just hold still while I do the air to input. The congregation of the First Antioch Missionary Baptist Church is one of the oldest in Valdosta. The present sanctuary at 517 North Oak Street was constructed in 1919. The massive building has its front very close to Oak Street, which gives it a tall appearance as if it's reaching to the sky. The building exhibits fine brick work and wonderful Romanesque Revival details. It's been perfectly maintained by the members of the church for over 100 years in its original design and form. The flinched bond red brick and black pattern on the front facade is a special detail not seen elsewhere in Valdosta. The building has its original design with arches, keystones, original windows with cobalt blue and amber yellow stained glass. The small buttress is also interesting, great work on the side of the building. It's been lovingly maintained by generations while retaining its beauty, original design, and historic integrity for over 100 years. So thank you all. It's a beautiful job that does always gets to see and maintain beautiful. Okay, also receiving a stewardship award this year is the First Baptist Church at 200 West Central on the corner of Central and Two Streets. Is there a representative from the First Baptist Church? Mr. Weaver, all right. The First Baptist Church building has been in existence for over 130 years. It's been maintained in really nice shape by the church the whole time. They've added buildings to the campus. The sanctuary walls are basically stone detailing. It's a mixture of Victorian and Romanesque Revival design features. Some years ago, the original metal roof on the building had to be replaced and so the church went for a new metal roof that was very similar to the design of the original roof. More recently, the Langdale Chapel behind that main sanctuary was rehabilitated extensively and care was taken to preserve all of historic materials there while the building was updated for continued use. And the last project that was done extremely recently is right on, can be seen right on Central Avenue. And that was restoration of the front doors with the original wood, raw lath, restained, and the door repaired to beautiful condition. So for over 130 years, the campus and the sanctuary building of the First Baptist Church has been maintained for our community to enjoy. Thank you very much for a beautiful job. Okay. One more. I would have been surprised. You told that one. The final award today, I'll let you go. Thank you for your time so far, is the Harold Wrenn Lifetime Achievement Award. That's for a person in our community who has dedicated many years of service to either rehabilitating buildings or documenting the history of the historic district here in Valdosta. Is Dr. Alfred Willis here? Dr. Willis, please. Dr. Alfred Willis is a Valdosta native. He graduated from Valdosta High School. He went to Clemson University and he received his doctorate degree from Columbia University. He's retired from the Harvey Library at Hampton University. Dr. Willis has dedicated many years of his life and energy to preserving early as well as modern architectural examples here in Valdosta through documentation. He has worked with local and civic-based historical organizations and teaching institutions. He's researched and written and lectured on architectural history on in-town and out-of-town architects on a variety of buildings throughout the historic district here in Valdosta. Examples of some of the projects that his buddy since have been based on include the bank of by Allen County Courthouse, the Nichols House, and the Dashner High School. Dr. Willis has constructed a extensive collection of information on Valdosta's historical history in a narrative form. Because of his efforts and 20-plus years of work for Valdosta, Valdosta probably has the best documented architectural history of any city of its size in the nation. So we can't help but give this gentleman a big hand. Thank you so much and thank you for everybody who works for Historic Preservation here in Valdosta. It's a wonderful concept. It really helps our community have spirit and it helps our community have more purpose as well. So thank you so much.
Jake, thank you. Glenn, thank you. Thank you all. We're going to move on to the minutes approval for last meeting, Valdosta City Council regular meeting. On June 25th, council has given time to review the minutes from the June 25th meeting. Are there any additions or deletions? If there are none, the minutes are approved and activated. Thank you, council. Moving on to number four, item four, public hearings. In consideration of our request to close a portion of Lion Street between East Adair and East Gordon, I compliments our city engineer, Representative.
Thank you. The task that you've had here is to petition a request of the closure of Lion Street between East Adair and East Gordon Street. I received a petition back in June and I met with the honor and servant and they want to expand their trial of care that's located by Forest Street, at by Fomo and Forest Street, and purchase the property off of Lion Street. We have past this draw and parts drawn utilities found and we're supporting the closure of the street just to allow them to expand their business. If you have any questions about this, Mr. Willis entered their engineering service. I'll take any questions on that.
If, I'll wait. Council, any questions for Pat? There's no questions. This is a public hearing, so anybody that is present would like to speak in favor of this request, please come forward, state your name and your address. None? Anybody that would like to speak against this request, please come forward. Make it live easy. Council, would I get a motion?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the closure of portion of Harvey Street requested between East Adair and East Gordon Street.
Second.
Show hands, all in favor. You may ask, council. Thank you. Item five, ordinance and resolutions. Consideration of a resolution to approve a loan modification, promissory notes and loan agreements with the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority, GFA, for a six-month interest agreement for all on notes currently underwriting. Chuck, they didn't start brilliant finance.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. As a result of the ongoing COVID pandemic, GFA has decided to offer the state all municipalities who have borrowed from them a six-month payment holiday on outstanding notes. As the mayor mentioned, this is just a straight payment holiday. There's no interest accrual or anything of that nature. The city has a resolution in front of you. Take advantage of that. The city does require us to pass that resolution in order to take advantage of it. Now, the city does have nine notes outstanding with the total service of $538,911.30 a month. That will be significant cash savings for us over the next several months if we take advantage of this. It will allow us to get from, you know, our blue months in the middle of the summer past the point where we would normally collect our property tax. So while it is not necessarily an overall difference in what we would pay out of the future flavor, it does represent a defer, it allows us to keep the cash in our bank so that if we need it for emergency, if there is no, everything going on at the moment, collections of utilities and several other, our normal working streams are a little uncertain. So I think this is really more a precaution than anything else. The city is not in bad shape. It's not the fact to do this, but it will provide us, like I said, a little bit of vision as a precaution against some uncertainty. And it does provide us some flexibility to take advantage of some other opportunities that they should present themselves. So thanks for that.
Chuck, that was very creative and anybody that was a defense for the budget here, those that we passed, the balanced budget, but with only $65,000 we're panting. So a way to get creative is to cancel all the US chucking questions you might have.
Explain what you mean by water bill. You say it with a system. Is citizens' water bill a?
No, I mean with the city's revenue collection. We have a number of revenue agreements that are a little less certain than normal. And this will drive us with a cushion in case revenue come a little more slowly than anticipated, but.
Cause I was advised by some citizens that someone from our department told them that this funding was to assist our citizens with their water bills. That's been our one that you've verified by the water bills.
No, I took their, I won't go into that, but there may be another.
It's another source of funding.
No, not this. There is something out there, but this is a different, different factor. So this, this is no interest, so they've made it for six months. Six months worth of what, 3.3 million? Is that what it'll be at the end of six months? But there's a total cash saved. Yeah, but 500 change alone for six months. In addition, we have been making additional principal payments from slots on our largest move that would also be suspended again in comparison with the interest accruing. But that cash also would be available either at the end of it, we could pay it down on loan on some, or if there were another opportunity to pay along that would be more attractive, we'd have that flexibility to take advantage of it. Will we be able to put this like into an account that we can probably gain some interest off of? It will sit in our finance account that is interest-bearing. So there would be a little bit there. I don't think fairness interest rates are high right now. But I think the bigger consideration for us is the fact that it may prevent us from having the co-operative payment of the tax anticipation method. If collections were to come in, of course, auto register would come a little bit lower and to recover short cash, the fiscal options the city's exercised, there would be a tax anticipation. If people don't do that, this is obviously very unusual here. And this may be the difference between whether or not we have to do that or we don't. The cost of fishing can, can hit me size because our origin age and everything else is all within this condition with the interest to check to balance.
How much, what did you claim that a month that you made?
It's a lot of faculty.
All this deal, you ain't got to make that $500 break in until they push you to the back and you know that they don't do this thing. That's all it mean. You guys ain't gonna pay the six months. That's all it mean.
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's it.
It's in our pockets too. They're here for your seed.
Council, any other questions? I have a motion to approve the loan modification.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve this.
Second. All in favor, show hands. Heads, council. Thank you. Chuck, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
We're now moving on to item six. This is our citizens to be heard. We ask that you come forward, state your name and address, as we may have left the record. Our policy also requires you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Please also direct all comments to council as a whole and not attempt to engage individual members of council to debate council's policy and follow through with you on your concern after the meeting. Public citizen.
Hi, my name is Jimmy Boyd, pastor. Jimmy Boyd. I am, my address 9204 Brookhaven Drive. I am the senior pastor of the greatest church here in Valdosta, as well as I am the president of the Valdosta Lounds Alliance. And I just want to inform the mayor and the city council that after the incident with the police and Mr. Smith, that our community is outraged. And I want to go on the record of coming here today and letting you know that our community is outraged. John Maxwell says, "Everything rises and falls on leadership." And it is apparent after watching the video of Mr. Smith that our leadership has failed the citizens of Valdosta. I teach accountability, neighborhood accountability, where I teach going to neighborhoods and teach, if you see something, say something. Well, when you're a leader, you don't only see something, say something, you do something. Mr. Smith, since February, had this incident, this terrible incident that happened. We seen it, but nobody had said anything and nobody has done anything. And so that's why I'm here. I have a resolution and I say this until you may personally, with all respect and humbly as I know how. I believe that if you look back in how you have handled this situation, that you will see that not all of the citizens of Valdosta feel like they was protected. And I ask that you resign. I ask that you resign humbly as I know, I know how, because I believe that you have failed. Because all, everything rises and falls on the leadership. And as a leader, you have failed this community. If you choose not to resign, your community's citizens are already organizing to recall you a secret. Because Valdosta is about to change and this is a city without limits. Not only you, I say to the city council that you guys have a responsibility to uphold the people that you lead and serve. And so I ask that it is no way possible that an incident happened in February. No discipline was taken, nothing was happening, and we knew about this as long as we knew about it. I ask that you first, secondly, find some money. City manager, police chief, and everybody else who has something to do with it, they need to go. Valdosta ready for a change.
Pastor, thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Please state your name and evidence.
Good evening. I'm Mayor Tony 305 South Street, Valdosta, Georgia. I'm here today on behalf of address 0607. Address is 728 East Hill Avenue. Like I remember of last year, it was a company that was doing some underground borrowing to run lines of fire offices or some type of utilities out here. What they did was decide on getting collapsed. The other day, they have a similar license line anyway. And yet, we get one of those man's, I, anyway, I would like it tonight when I can look at that and hold that company accountable for damaging outside walls. We go, this is a high traffic area and we need to get fixed as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. Any other citizens to be heard at this time? Anybody else that wants to come forward? If not, I'd like to invite Mark Barber, city manager up. City manager up for the city managers report. Mark, please.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, mayor, council. Hope everyone's doing well. Council, one, two, thank you for our high style masks we're wearing in the city. It's really cool. It looks great on us. So I just want to remind everybody, Saturday, August 1st, we're going to be held with our annual back-to-school reunion. You know, in the past, we've thought of a back-to-school bash. We had a drug bar, had a lot of activities and good fun. After everything else, through the 19th event, this celebration as well. So we're going to be doing things a little bit different this year. We're going to close Valley Street on Saturday, August 1st in front of our Montauk Porches Room. There's going to be a drive-by. The citizens will enter into here one way or another, exit the other. And we'll have staff who'll hand their book bags with all the supplies for school at that point in time. So hey. time. So hey, we have to do it this way, but we just felt that was the safest and most responsible thing to do this year. So we're still doing it. We're not gonna pack even out of the cell thing. They're gonna, they're gonna keep them there just to try to be that much more cautious for our students. That's Saturday, August first. On Wednesday, July twenty-ninth, from two to eight, City Hall multi-purpose room, West Street, we have hosting the fire and police departments for any battle of the magic blood drive. Red Cross is in need of patients, need of patients at hospitals, the blood supplies, blood, I understand. But what's unique about this blood drive this time around is it's going to be testing for COVID-19 antibodies as well as just, it's just raw blood. So plus a lot of things that you should ask. The statement, there's a lot of good things going on, stick house of things going on. You got a lot of the program, everyone take their time, step in and go through each one of those. We have answering questions, if you're ready.
Can you say that with my last five apartment?
Fire, please provide us the battle of the matches.
Questions? Mark, thank you. I have a vague council comments. Anything you want to add today?
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I believe what you said. One, one thing you already have about you to the audience, we need masses. I, I think we need to jump on it. If other cities who have made a mandate, I think we have both things out of two spots that right is every day in, in passing, they, uh, the big part of it. And I think that there's a little thing that we can do, that you can get a vaccination for this thing. This, this COVID-19 is very, very red danger and a lot of land things had suffered from this. And we, and, and I, I know what the government, what we do, but sometimes we have to step out and go a little further and like you said, I really think we, we should jump in the vein of the city group making a mandate, a budget, a budget, a city water, cost saving back. I remember back in two thousand two, we were something like that. I initially had an issue of, uh, two dialers that couldn't smoke in restaurant or whatever. And my doctor spoke, I couldn't hear him, going against it. And now you go back, first thing somebody do is put up a sign, uh, when you go over the building, say no smoking, water, cost saving back. And when you pass it, it's a call of what we got now and save now. And sometimes we have to go contrary to what laws exist because we, we got a history that I can repeat. I go to all these cities and it could all run, you know? So I, I just, I push that issue that we're gonna put it around together, man. Next, I said, a certain thing we're about to provide yesterday, um, I, I don't want to like that group did say nothing as a group publicly. I go with you and I play good, um, issue now and you have to get back what we said because we need an elevation. But I just don't find it, that it's, that's a group that's been from council that we did set up nothing. If we didn't consider this happening in February, you waited out for two, three months later before we find out about you and tell me. And I understand what it looked like to the public, we have to deal in it and we have to say that we all had a great deal of conversation among ourselves and children and everybody. And here with this portion, situation.
We all agree on that. We all agree, and I lost count on the individual meetings that I took. It's became a full-time job for, for a longer period of time.
I, I, I understand that, but what I was saying to you here with me just, sometimes if we don't say so, we look at you coming up so many, and I know you do that.
I thought previously that I liked saying that, but it's been tough.
Mayor, can I ask one about the mask or question about some figures? Glad you said that, Congressman, because as, I don't know if you're aware of it, yesterday GMA delivered an executive summary to Governor Kim saying the local government should have a rule on this matter, and we're one of the cities that assign owners around the cities, around the city of Georgia, we're one of those that assign own account.
You get that, you get that, GMA are a certain thing. Good, great.
And this constable person would just like to make a comment that I think we were trying to promote wear your mask. It is very important, I want to say just because I also in the medical field, I have seen a lot of what is happening with this COVID-19. We are forcing, we're not forcing, but we are really recommending, we are trying to provide everybody a real mask. It can do a lot to live. It may not look like it to a lot of people, but it does because a lot of people, not going to say stop the virus, it is going to slow it down. It's not keeping a lot of people from being sick and out. So we are asking that you please wear a mask, please promote it, tell your friends, your family, and you know, it's not always doing it for yourself. Do it for your loved ones because I'm telling you, it can affect others much more than it can affect yourself. And I want to say this too, I tested positive. I have not once stepped, I have not sniffed, I have not coughed, had been sick, had been weak, and as I tested negative, I didn't take anything, I don't know how that happened. But I, because of my exposure of being on our patients at the hospital, I did test positive. And I think that's what happened, that's what I think I had to handle. But then I stayed away in quarantine and I took another test and I was late. And I'll tell you, I took more medicine, y'all. I just never was sick. I got some rest, so that's good, but that's all. So we just don't know how this thing of getting people to do it, but it is serious, y'all, because I have seen so many, it's like every week, someone I know is dying, okay? So please, 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 please consider it, push it, promote it, do it, okay? And one other thing I want to say too, now pertaining to what Jimmy said about the council and mayor and so forth, I just kind of like to ask that they look a little bit deeper in the type of government that the city of Valdosta have. You know, we, there are different forms of government that you have and certain rules that we have to follow and do. And I would just like to ask that citizens kind of consider that and look into the type of form of government that we have. And please, please citizens, don't think we are overlooking or not respecting or trying to look out for citizens, that is just not true. And that's all I can say.
Thank you. Counsel, any further comments? Eric?
I don't have the authority to speak for every member of Mayor Council. But what I do have is the authority to speak on right and wrong.
Amen.
Dr. King and Reverend John Lewis, they marched so we could have a seat at the table. Now that we have a seat at the table, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna just be happy to see that at the table? I'm not. I wanna eat. If I don't have a seat at the table, I wanna, I wanna have some hanging in the dinner preparation. The city of Valdosta, we going through a lot right now. We have, we're in the middle of a pandemic. We have children afraid to go to school. We have parents who don't know if they want to send their children to school. We are in the middle of financial hardship. What we need to think about now is as Mayor Council, all of our members are public, anyone who wants to reach out to us and contact us, you can't, I have heard from people, I have called the way they called, but we need with our citizens to contact us when you have issues or concerns you want to talk about. We just schedule a meeting. We're not avoiding anyone. We want you guys to be a part of the solution. I'm trying to say this so it won't come off wrong. This form of old-fashioned scare tactics and pushing people around, those are the ways of old. Everyone up here on council has a, everyone up in Mayor Council have their own form of income. No one up here takes care of their family off of this income that be getting from being a council. We all had jobs prior to this, we all took care of our families prior to this. So if we don't have it, I don't think any of our families are gonna go with, go with that. We're all representatives of this city. Although we're put in these positions by our district, we're still representing the entire city. So I want all the, especially for my young people out there who are listening, think maybe they don't have a voice or that we're just making decisions for them, reach out to us. Ask us questions, get involved. Don't think that your voice and your concerns don't matter. We're not even allowed the narrative that Valdosta is a terrible place or Valdosta is not a place you want to come to, 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 to bring down our city. We have a lot of things that we are encompassing. And we ask that everyone who wants to be a part of it, pull your chair up to the table and engage in some meaningful dialogue. But if that's not your idea of what you want to have done, please move to the side and on non-stop progress. Mr. Smith's incident is being taken care of in civil, in, in civil litigation, and that's where it's gonna be taken care of unless something is developed. So I don't want anyone to think that we took that lightly or we taking it lightly. And as far as the city managers' position, no one knows the conversations that were taken, that have taken place with the city manager, so we can't speak on that. The conversations we had or things we put in place with the police chief, no one knows that but us, so we can't speak on that. And as far as the mayor resigning, that would be a decision that the mayor would have to make upon himself, take upon himself, and indeed, if we get enough signatures to recall the mayor. We only had six thousand people to vote in the election. There's sixty thousand people in the city of Valdosta. We can get thirty-two thousand signatures on a piece of paper to recall the mayor. I would like for that thirty-two thousand people to fill out their census paper. That's what I would ask, and I don't ask it in this way.
Any further comments?
I just want to add to what Constable Howard just said. I myself have been threatened concerning this incident that happened. Mr. Barker was there for me. People have called me from every area, cities that I didn't even know about, and they threatened me, they talked about me, they belittled me, they threatened to move me out of the seat. So the citizens don't know. We've been beat down also, but we still get up every day. There are days that I came in and I had to go and talk to Councilor Biggers, I would call Andy, I had to call somebody, all these guys here. I would have to call Mr. Barker, he would let me go in his office, he would let me cry it out, I would walk back out the door and try it again. So you all don't know. You think we don't feel what you feel, but I feel it every day. I've lived it every day. There are some days that I don't want to get up, but I keep getting up. There are neighborhoods I go in that I be called every name but my name, but nobody's there to protect me. And I have to calm my husband down from wanting to take over it because every man, every child loved their mom. Every family loved their sister and their aunt. But I keep trying, I keep going. So to say that we don't feel, it hurts. It hurt real deep. Because like Constable Howard said, we don't make no money, but we go every day. Every day I'm in the neighborhood, I walk in the rain, in the shine, in the sun, everywhere, everything, I'm out there. It doesn't matter what district, I'm out there. I'm promoting census. If we can get some people to sign census paper, all of these sidewalks, street widening, we can get those things, we can get them very easily. But we only fifty-eight percent in the state of Georgia have filled out their census report. How I know? I'm on the committee. I give a report every day. So as Constable Howard said, and all the councilors in agreement, if every district feel like their census report, there's so many things that Valdosta could give that would blow your mind. We giving away money by setting our bickering, but let's put our hands to work and let's feel like these census forms. And if you need a mask, tell your friends to call me. I have to go, go, and beg somebody to give me one. I'll go get it. I even go to the hospital and beg. It doesn't matter to me. Does anybody that know me know? If you say go get it, I'm going to get it. If you open the door, I'm gonna walk through it, even if you don't open it, I'm gonna walk through it. That's the kind of person I am. I care about the city of Valdosta and I care about my family. And I love this street morning, everybody know that. I get in trouble every day about that with Councilor Biggers. But I support the city of Valdosta to the one-hundred percent. So again, I thank you for believing in me. I thank you for trying to help me. And I know she may have been here and get tired of me, cause anything I know happened in my neighborhood or in the city of Valdosta, I'm gonna call. And so far, she's came to everything I asked her to do. Even to the point, sometimes she kicks me standing inside a fence and she'll let her run. I even know she's, she's constantly moving in your area. That let me know she's trying to help me do things in my area. And I love the red fire trucks, when I see them going that way, I'm like a kid. I wanted to make that noise, you know, that's, that's me. I'm a very hyper person, so don't judge me about me being hyper, but I'm a very lovable person to be pushed the wrong way. But again, I thank you for what you're doing and I thank you, you can help us get everybody to feel like these census forms. Work with us and sit on, we the councilors, along with our city manager, make a change in the city of Valdosta. Just work with us. Give us a chance. Help us. If you want change, you gotta help me. I can't do it by myself. I need you, 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 and you to help me accomplish the goals that I have with the city of Valdosta. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Sandra Doolery, our other councilwoman said prior to that, we have a certain form of government, so what I'll say is it's not an accurate statement I'm about to make, it's just a passionate statement. And that is, this is my counsel. Like I said, that's not accurate, that's passion. Thank you guys for your passion. Eric, Sandra, thank you. Thank you guys for working your behinds off every day, and verbal what Vivian said too. What our city clerk and our assistant city clerk and our public information officer had to go through every time they picked up that phone for that period of time. Would have sent you to church five times on Sunday and every day during the week. It was awful to hear, it was awful to see. From the community, it was productive one-on-one meetings, five-on-one meetings. The phone, the cowardice of the phone, the cowardice of the email, the cowardice of social media, it was all fifty states and five. You had threats, threats of property. FBI stepped in, made two arrests in other states. You have to have an armed guard at the bottom of the stairs down there with a woman. This is not a civilized society for limited people. Let's be the shining example. Counsel, any other comments?
Well, I have to say that social media posted, Councilman Yip cheered us not long ago. Find group of all kinds of Valdostans out the corner elsewhere, holding up signs of grace, signs of love, and signs of care. And at a time when there's such chaos in this world, and if you get your chaos in a country, we just focus on the one important thing, much love, one another. That's it.
Get out the motion to the church.
Go. Eric.
All of them. 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 All of them.